We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for today, which is October the first. We'll have our invocation by Pastor Gene Fields of Heritage Baptist Church. And after that, our pledge allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. Father, literally everything we have and experience is a gift from you. So Father, it's good because you love us and we thank you for that. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to be able, in this setting, to be able to pray and to come before you, Father. Father, we do invite you into this room. Father, I pray not just for our city council and our mayor, but for all of us to see our community, Father, with your heart and your eyes. Father, I pray for your wisdom in this room tonight. And Father, I was reminded of a couple of groups that I just wanted to publicly pray for tonight. Father, first of all, I want to pray for our first responders, Father of our community, that protect and serve. Father, I'm just thankful for those that put their lives on the line to save ours and to protect us, Father. Father, also reminded of, in our community right now and over these last months, there's a segment of our population, our senior adults, many in nursing homes and assisted living that have not been able to get out, that have not been able to have visitors. And Father, I just, as a community prayer, Father, I just lift them up and, Father, that as a pastor and that, Father, we use your wisdom and your spirit, Father, maybe to find ways to creatively share your love with them. And Father, just lift them up tonight. Father, again, we love you and we thank you for placing us here in this community. And Father, we are so blessed in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge. And Pastor Fields, thank you so much for bringing the invocation and reminding us that we are blessed and it's a privilege to be able to come out of the house and that we will continue to pray for those that are sick and shut in, and our seniors especially. I will go through the announcements and presentations and do the protocol for the meeting. And then we will get to the agenda that has been prepared for us. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Douglasville City Council Meeting. I am Douglasville's Mayor Rochelle Robinson. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in whole or in part by teleconference. Our elected officials that are going to present tonight are present. We do have two elected officials that are joining us teleconference. And I will say your names, and if you don't mind, please respond that you are here. So it's Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley. Please, if you're here, respond by saying "present" or "aye." She is not? Okay, then we'll go on to Councilmember Chris Watts. If you are on the call, please respond that you're present.
I'm present.
Thank you so much, Coach Watts. We appreciate you being here. So this is an open meeting of the Douglasville, myself, mayor and council, is being conducted by the teleconference consistent with the official code of Georgia annotated section 50-141G due to emergency conditions involving public safety in order to mitigate the transmission of coronavirus and to reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness. That section, code section, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows local governments to meet by teleconference in the event of emergency so long as means are afforded by the public to have simultaneous access to the teleconference meeting. For this meeting, we are convening partially by Zoom software, as shown on the city's website, describing how the public may join, which is via YouTube media platform. For applicants and all other participants, be advised that this meeting will allow public comments as well. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comments and listeners are not required to identify themselves, please note that this meeting is being recorded. The business, if you're here to discuss, this is just our meeting that is a work session. We will not take action on these items until our meeting on Monday. If you do have comments to make, we ask that you would come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. There is a portion that you can talk, and you have five minutes to do that. If you are for or against an item, there are 20 minutes for those in favor and 20 minutes for those in opposition. We only ask that one person will speak at a time. Please do not disrupt anyone while they're talking. I'll remind you that we're only required to take public comments on public hearings on those zoning matters. If you have a cellphone or other electronic devices, I ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until the meeting is over. The agenda items will be handled as the following. The committee chairperson will read their agenda item. After that, the chairperson will ask for statements from the audience and the applicant will come forward. Again, there's a maximum of 20 minutes for each side and each person has five minutes to speak. Myself and councilmembers were possibly asked questions to help us make our decisions on Monday. Then the committee chairperson will make a motion. All of that is for the voting meeting. But please give your name and address for the record. If you have any printed materials, we ask that you would please give those to the clerk, Ms. Vicki Acker, who is in the rear to my right, your left. And I think that's all of the instructions that we have for the meeting tonight. And I'll move into the agenda. We do have a proclamation, and it is to present this proclamation honoring the retired educators of Douglasville, Douglas County, Georgia. It's for Mr. Stone and Ms. Elaine Stone to come. And I will read the proclamation and then we'll ask you to come forward and you can make any comments that you would like. And we will take a socially-distanced picture with you. Okay. It's from the office of the mayor. Whereas, the governor of the state of Georgia has proclaimed the day of Sunday, November the first, 2020, as Retired Educators' Day. And there are more than 123,000 retired educators in Georgia, 29,000 of them who live the Georgia Retired Educators Association. And whereas, the retired educators of Georgia donate thousands of hours of volunteer service and make invaluable contributions to the welfare of the Douglasville community. And whereas, it is appropriate that a day be designated for citizens to express their appreciation for the contributions that retired educators have made and continue to make for the Douglasville community. And whereas, other local service organizations will recognize those lasting contributions made by retired educators to this great community. Now therefore, I Rochelle Robinson, Mayor of the City of Douglasville, and on behalf of the Douglasville City Council and the citizens of the city, do hereby proclaim Sunday, November 1st, 2020, as Retired Educators' Day in the City of Douglasville, so proclaimed this first day of October. So Mr. Stone, you want to come forward? You and your bride, if you all want to make any statements. And I will just give a personal, know the personal privilege to say that my mother had many careers and the lasting one was education. She taught in the home before we got to school and then she was director of Head Start in Ohio. But educators train all the other professions. So it's very, very important. And we appreciate everything that you do. A lot of times, you're underpaid, understaffed. You give so much. And thank you so much. And we have an educator on the city council, because I didn't see Kenny, Kenny, what's his name? Always calling, Coach Watts. But no, he looks like a singer, a country western singer that I always call him. But, so Coach Watts, we appreciate you as well for serving as an educator in the city of Douglasville for many, many years. So thank you so much. Councilman Adams reminded me that. I didn't see Coach Watts sitting over there. So if you all would like to make any comments, and we'll bring the proclamation around and take a socially-distanced picture.
Yes, I'd like to personally thank you, Mayor and council, for recognizing retired educators in the state of Georgia and in Douglasville and Douglas County. To let you know that TRS, the Teacher Retirement System, sends money to 1,060 people that are retired that have zip codes and area codes in Douglas County.
Wow.
And if you want to know how much that is annually, that's $38 million annually that comes into this county to these individuals. That's a pretty good-sized employer for that. The other thing is, I think parents now have learned that teachers are fairly important because since with the COVID situation and in-home learning, it's a different ballgame.
Yes, sir.
And I think after this, and we find a vaccine for this and things get back to, quote, "normal," everything will be a lot different. Also to let you know that of the retired educators that retire in the state of Georgia, 89% of them stay in the state of Georgia and put back into the community. I did. Elaine has. We volunteer for a lot of things.
Yes, sir.
I retired in the school system and went to work for the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and worked for them several years. And now retired, and I do more work now than I did when I was working, so.
Yes, sir.
It's good to be out and about. Another thing, our unit, our local Douglas County unit gives four scholarships to kids, young seniors graduating, going into education.
Yes, sir.
Two of them are of $1,000 each and two of them are $1,250 each. So that's how much our unit gives every year. We have a membership of approximately 140, about 50 come on a regular basis when we meet. And we haven't been meeting lately.
Yes, sir.
But they put a lot of hours back into the community, service hours, substitute teaching, whatever else, community work, church work and everything. But we do appreciate you recognizing us today and we thank you very much. And thank you for all the stuff you've done for Douglas County and Douglasville. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Do you have anything to say? He said everything? I know. We see you all at Christmas time, too, when the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department help the students and give back at Walmart. So it's always great to see you there. Coach Watts, you know, I always call you Kenny Rogers. Would you like to say anything? We appreciate you after retiring, coming to serve on the council.
Well, I just, I appreciate what Mr. and Mrs. Stone have contributed to the county. I've known Mr. Stone for a long time. He's at Central Office. But I'd just like to say that for 37 years, I got to teach elementary physical education in person. But my daughter, who just got a PE job at Chapel Hill Middle School, I have finally witnessed what I never thought I'd witness, somebody teaching ping pong virtually. And I'm gonna tell you, she's doing a good job. But for a little while there, when they were teaching virtually, I wasn't sure it could be done, but it's getting done. So a shout out to all the teachers and what they're going through right now. It's not, it's not an optimal situation, but they're doing a great job.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you too as well. And I think Dr. LaShawn Burdanley, is she on the line? Okay, she's involved in education as well. Any other councilmembers have any comments to make? Thank you. Not hearing any. Can we please give them a hand before we come around? So I'm not certain if communications will come and we'll just do a socially-distanced photo. All right, that was great. Now we'll move on with the agenda and you can either follow on the screen or there are some printed outside on the desk. And so we'll move on to item five, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have two items tonight on the agenda for economic development. And as a point of order, if it's okay, I'd like to read both of those together.
Yes, sir.
The first is to appoint Ms. Colette Jackson to serve as the post-two member of the Douglasville Downtown Development Authority to an unexpired term expiring March 22nd, 2022. And the second item is to appoint Mr. David A. Wilson to serve as post-three member of the Douglas Downtown Development Authority to an unexpired term expiring March 22nd, 2022. Ms. Jackson, I think those are the only two people for each of those positions. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Is there anything else that you wanted to say or add at this point?
No, sir.
Okay. If it's, being that they're the only members or the only candidates for those two positions, if it's council's acquiescence, we'll just put them on the consent agenda. Okay? Then that being that, that is all I have under the Economic Development Committee. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Handled very well. We'll move on to Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
No business tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Housing and Community Affairs Committee, the Councilmember Burdanley. And I believe the vice chair is Councilmember Davis.
I just have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then to Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
No business at this time, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Personnel Organization Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have one item tonight, Personnel Organization. Item A, adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contracts with Humana Inc., Anthem Life Insurance Company, the Lincoln National Life Insurance Company, and Total Administrative and Services Corporation for city-sponsored employee insurance benefits for the calendar year 2021 and stating the anticipated city contribution for each such employee benefit, Ms. Austin Bing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Tia Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. If you recall, in our last round, our insurance broker, NFP, spoke before you to brief you on the recommendations for 2021 insurance carriers and as well as what we were presenting in open enrollment this year. This resolution is for your review and approval to officially adopt what will be our insurance carriers. Just to summarize, Anthem Life will be our medical provider this year as well as our vision and dental. We will also continue the Humana Medicare plans for our retirees age 65 and over. We will also continue with our flexible spending accounts as well as our health reimbursement arrangement for our employees. So this resolution sums up the city's portion as it relates to cost share and then just reiterates all of the specific names of our contract carriers. If you have any questions about 2021 insurance plans, costs, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bing. Madam Mayor, do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you so much, Councilman Watts.
Any other councilmembers that have any questions or comments? Ms. Austin Bing, one question I did have, and I may not have heard this correctly, is Anthem Lacrosse Blue Shield still doing the vision and the dental, did you say?
Yes, sir. They are, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to ask that this be placed on the consent agenda for Monday, if that's okay?
It looks like you have consent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all we have tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, Coach. We'll move on to item number 10, which is Planning and Development Committee, that's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight. We'll try to combine some of those.
Okay.
See if we can push through this agenda. Item A, though, is to authorize the mayor to sign a development agreement with SL Douglas Place 2 LLC requiring an exchange of property, including the city's disposition of portions of Wood Road. I see that Mr. Howard Ray is here on behalf of SL Place 2. And I will call on Ms. Littlefield to try to help us understand exactly what the agreement is that we need to sign with this developer. Ms. Littlefield?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The next item is going to be a development plan from this same group. They are, they're suggesting to you that we close certain parts of public streets that haven't been used in a long time in that area and that they'd be able to use that for their development. And in return, they will create some new right-of-way over there. And while they would normally dedicate it to us because we are losing some and gaining some, we need to use the property exchange statute, which is under property disposition for cities. And so that's what this development agreement would have us do and sets out the steps. What happens is if you approve their development plan, then they will have their part appraised and our part appraised. And if our part is more than theirs, they will pay us the difference at closing and we will make a property exchange with them.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments? Mr. Howard Ray, did you have anything that you would like to say concerning this? I know you don't give up the microphone very easily sometimes, but I want to give you that.
I was gonna say something. I just want to say that the client is agreeable to the document. I'm sorry. Howard Ray, 6554 East Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. And SL Bright Star is agreeable to the development agreement as presented by the city.
Thank you, sir. Council, Madam Mayor, you will see on pages five and six of this attachment basically the exchange that Ms. Littlefield has mentioned. I do recall that Gurley Road nor Wood Road have been used in many, many years that I can remember, all but abandoned, but not abandoned. They were still considered city streets. That's where this phase of the development is being considered. So questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take that up on Monday. Seeing none, we'll move on to item B. Consider a request for approval of development plan for Silverman Phase Four for 33 acres at Gurley Road and Wood Road in Land Lot 162, District One, Section Five, Parcell One, for plans dated August 20th, 2020, application by Hughes Ray Company Incorporated. Ms. Williams?
Grace Williams, Community Development Director, 6701 Church Street. The proposal currently depicts a distribution center warehouse and allowable use at this location. The proposed building is 500,400 square feet and proposed building site area is 33 acres. The site plan indicates 227 proposed car parking spaces, 140 truck parking spaces, and 107 truck loading spaces. The development plan will have two access points to the west of the development off of Bright Star Connector. The plan proposes a portion of the Gurley Road to be abandoned and proposed Wood Road right-of-way to now intersect with a new proposed roundabout. The exterior elevations indicate wall-site concrete cast panels. Staff, including building and zoning, have reviewed the application and attachments and has determined that the proposed plans meet development requirements of the UDO.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Ray, did you have something that you wanted to present or anything that you wanted to add to the packet that's been supplied to us, sir?
I need to say my name again?
Please.
Howard Ray, 6554 East Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia. Yeah, I think the main thing that I would point out is, you know, I sort of gave you all a plan that shows a little more than the actual development plan we're asking. But the main thing is sort of dealing with traffic. And so we sort of tried to segment this so that the tracks along Highway Five, you know, are more or less standalone. And then the other option was that over on the connector, we have the roundabout. The whole thinking is this way, we would not have any tractor-trailers entering a intersection without taking a left or having to take a left turn in an unsignalized condition. So, you know, in this case, they would always be able to enter into a signalized condition. I would note in the future, at the bottom where it says "future access drive," we anticipate a second roundabout there also. One of the things that we do like about this is this allows us to break up that asphalt thoroughfare and remove the left turns and create some landscape islands or whatever we work with the city, whether that's pavers or stamped concrete or something, just to break that up and, you know, use it in a different light. So I think this gives an opportunity to do the beautification down that corridor that we discussed during zoning. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Now, just for clarification, so the roundabout that you show on the plan, that would be proposed Wood Road, the relocation part of it, and the future access drive doesn't show one now. Both of these would be large enough and would require enough right-of-way, enough space for a tractor-trailer to come in and out. So it'd be a little bit more than just your standard passenger car that what we see around our, around occasionally here. Correct?
Correct. The one thing that this plan doesn't show that I'm in the process of still developing is when you have tractor-trailers and roundabouts in two lanes going through it.
Yes.
As they go into the curve, you put about a five-foot striped area just to let, I call it the truck waggle.
Sure.
In there. So, yes, it's, the right-of-way will be set up for all that.
Thank you. Council, Madam Mayor, any questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ray, I had a couple of questions. You mentioned the signal, there is going to be a signalized intersection as part of the development. Is that, at the roundabout itself would be signalized or there's something?
No, I was saying that with this design, that a tractor-trailer would not have to make a left across traffic that's unsignalized.
Okay. Don't require a signalization because of the roundabout. Okay.
Correct. Now, as part of the zoning and the whole package, there will be a light added at Bright Star Road and the connector. And we anticipate that probably in the next development along the connector itself.
Okay. Has, is there a traffic study scheduled for this proposal or is that part of, is that forthcoming or?
We get, we provided that during the DRI zoning process.
Okay.
And so the requirements were basically that we put a red light at Bright Star Road and the connector. And then in the turn lanes, without roundabouts on the connector, the turn lanes needed to be extended by, I think, like a couple hundred feet. So this sort of breaks up that scenario.
I'm a little concerned. This is not, this has nothing to do, you understand, you're just a designer, but my concern with this development is just looking at the scale of this, 500,000 square feet. Is that correct?
Right.
That's a lot of building. I mean, you know it's a lot of building when you look at the elevation drawings and actually requires two sheets to fit it on, you know? So that's a big building. And there's a lot of sameness to that building. This is speculative, correct? I think you said, there's no tenant set to go in at this point.
To my knowledge, nobody has signed a lease, correct?
I mean, I'm, my concern comes back to sort of the, you can say at the Walmart issue where you have a big box like this that gets, that gets developed and it may or may not get filled. I mean, obviously, I'm sure they have some idea that they think they're going to be successful at it. But my concern is, you know, 10 to 20 years down the road, if this thing doesn't stay filled or get filled, that we've got another incredibly large box in our community that really doesn't have any other purpose other than just a single use. The other, and the idea of, I understand the logistics and the realities of the property exchange for giving up the right-of-way and what we're getting in return for that. But it's the idea of, again, creating a super block, basically, that can't be really developed into anything else other than just one, this one massive building. It almost seemed that it would have been a better idea to break it into several smaller buildings that could actually be more flexible, more flexibly located on the property. And then also, I think that will be easier to rent in the long run or at least certainly easier to convert them into future uses if, for whatever reason, the warehousing business doesn't remain at the level that it is now. But I just wanted to express those concerns and I'm not sure if anybody shares those with me or not, but.
Just for conversation, Mr. Pro Tem, Mr. Ray, do you recall the size of the buildings that this company has already placed there in an adjoining parcel, just roughly as far as square footage is to give us some context?
Yeah, the Phase One that Anderson occupies is just under 400, I believe. And then they're building what we call Phase Two, which is the third building, so I apologize for the nomenclature. It's 280 and it's attached to the Anderson Building. And then what I call Phase Three, which is the one on the south side, that's 330. And it's actually split into, I think, five or six different users.
Those, those properties all are, in my mind, are very visible from Bright Star. There's no other out parcels in front of them. There's nothing that would screen them from Bright Star Road, correct? I mean, there's parking lots and things of that nature, but there's no other out parcels as there will be here with this development along the connector. Looks as though there's, there's future development lots that would in some way screen. Looks as though there's, there's future development lots that would in some way screen this building from the roadway.
Correct.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. We, we, we anticipate, um, at least two buildings, uh, in this future O D development between the roundabout and the future access.
Okay. I just want, I just want to clarify that. Others have questions or comments? No, uh, go ahead, uh, Ms., Ms. Miller, go ahead.
What is the occupancy rating with the buildings over close to the Anderson Building in that area? Do you know? Are, are they all occupied, leased out?
The one that's being built, I really don't know, to be honest with you, the two hundred and seventy-one thousand that's attached to Anderson. I know originally when we started the thing for Anderson, that was supposed to be their, um, movement into, uh, manufacturing.
Okay.
Um, this is me sort of telling you what I believe. It doesn't make it true, so bear with me here. Is that, I know that, um, I want to say, um, the Silverline window parcel got sold to Plagium? Anyway, so they're not manufacturing those anymore. So, so I think that that is going to be, um, leased out also, but not to Anderson.
Okay.
Did that answer kind of sort of?
Well, I'm, I'm just a little curious to see if we could find out what the actual facts are.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I'll get you that and email it to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. That's all I've got.
Mr. Davis, did you have a question?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you answered when you, uh, brought up the Anderson Building and the big box. You, you answered my question. Thank you.
What about you, Ms. Estes? Any question there? Okay, we, we also have Coach Watts. Coach, did you have any questions for, um, Mr. Howard Ray concerning this item B?
Uh, no, sir. I do not.
And what about, um, Dr. LaShawn Burdanly? Is she on the line?
No.
Okay, she is not. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ray. I appreciate your, you bringing that information to us. Um, I would say that it appears that everything there in the previous buildings, as Ms. Miller had asked, everything that is complete is occupied. Is that correct? To my knowledge, it is. I mean, that's how it appears.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other question or comment? Madam Mayor, did you have anything? I didn't mean to skip you.
No, sir. He's having, I'm, I'm fine.
All right. Well, then we will move on then and we'll take item B, uh, under consideration for vote on Monday. Okay? Moving to item C, and I'm going to ask Ms. Jackson to help us and also I'll ask our city attorney, uh, Ms. Littlefield to comment here. Item C says, remove without cause Mr. Martin Raxton as the Ward One member of the Douglasville Planning Commission and appoint an individual to that position for a term expiring June one, two thousand twenty-one. Can you help us, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. There are two individuals, Mr. Burgy Gordy and Mr. Nathan Zachary, that the mayor council has interviewed. And they both meet the requirements for the planning commission and both reside in Ward One. On Monday night, you all will have a ballot to vote and I would defer to Ms. Littlefield regarding the item wording.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Littlefield?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, your, uh, charter allows you to remove from office, uh, any board members either for cause or without cause. Without cause generally means you're not giving a reason, but, uh, with cause generally means that it's, it's some conduct that you're not fond of, that that person has done. In this case, um, the proposal is, is not to remove him for cause because I know you're not wanting to remove him due to his behavior. Uh, but, uh, the reason, of course, is that he is currently assigned to a ward where he does not live. Uh, so you would be removing him so you could appoint, uh, someone who does live in that ward. And he's also a candidate for the ward where he does live. But you do need to remove him from, from that ward in order to appoint someone else.
Thank you, Ms. Littlefield. I appreciate that clarification. I, I wanted to make sure that, that that was understood, uh, as to the, the wording of the way that is set up, just to make sure everyone understood that there was a process that we had to follow. So we will take that up on, uh, Monday. Any question or comment?
I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Jackson, if you would tell us again, I know you've said it before and we, um, have interviewed, tonight was our final candidate. So if you would just, um, remind us, I think we only vote in wards one and four.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, uh, the other wards two, three, and five, the individuals that we've interviewed would be, uh, placed in those positions, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. My apologies. And for Ward Five, you will not be appointed Mr. Keith Burnett because he is currently serving in that Ward Five position and live in Ward Five. And he was the only individual or only candidate that you all interviewed. So that's why you don't see, um, a appointment up here for Ward Five.
Okay. And we, uh, were in this predicament because we cleaned up our planning commission, um, requirements. And we had members that didn't live in the wards and, and some opted not to, uh, remain on the planning commission. So we're in a position now that we potentially can have ninety-eight percent new people. So, um, do we have a plan for, well, if we don't have one person to come back, we will not have continuity really, uh, but because Mr. Burnett is fairly new himself, do we have a plan, uh, to get these members up to speed? Because they go right into a planning commission meeting, um, after having been voted on, I think their meeting is probably the next day.
Yes, ma'am. So I've had several conversations myself, as well as Ms. Williams, with all the individuals that would be potentially appointed. Um, I've been speaking with them for probably about a month. We've given them, starting about three weeks ago, we gave them all the items that will be on the October sixth planning commission meeting. So they are up to speed with those and I've checked in on them all week and they are very comfortable with all the items as well as on Tuesday at five o'clock, I believe, Ms. Littlefield, Ms. Williams, as well as our I T staff will be in on that meeting to get them, um, abreast with Robert's Rule of Orders, with the items and with everything else as it relates to the planning commission. And then their first meeting will actually start at six P M.
Yes, ma'am. And they are all, I mean, the, the wards that we have to vote on and notwithstanding, they're, they're really, uh, prepared, I would imagine as well would be prepared. And all these individuals are highly skilled based on their resumes, so I'm sure they'll be able to adapt. But it's just, um, you know, they're coming in new and we vote on them one day and they're in the meeting the next day. And we don't have anyone that's really had a lot of experience, uh, to lead that, uh, planning commission. So it gives me a little bit of a, a little nervous, um, because I've served on the planning commission when it was a zoning board and it's more complicated than just sitting and listening to people, you know, within concern. So that's my only, you know, that I'm really nervous about succession planning and all. We're just put in this position where we have all these new members, but that's the only comment I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Moving right along then, we will go to item D. And I want to say, I want to preface this, because items D, E, F, and G all have one person in the position. The nominations have been closed. There will be no other interviews and there are no other possibilities. So we will, as Madam Mayor had mentioned, we will not be voting, um, because we only have one person in these particular situations. So I'm going to read all of them and then unless there is a, a problem, I'm going to follow our Mayor Pro Tem's plan and, and ask that these be placed on the consent agenda. Okay? I'll start with item D. Appoint Mr. Mark Van to serve as Ward Two Post One Member of the Douglasville Planning Commission for a term expiring June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Ms. Jackson, can, can we, can we just cover all those at once?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, E, appoint Ms. Natalie Fegan to serve as the Ward Two Post Two Member of the Douglasville Planning Commission for a term expiring June first, two thousand twenty-five. Item F, appoint Mr. Ralph Benton to serve as the Ward Three Post One Member of the Douglasville Planning Commission for a term expiring June one, two thousand twenty-five. And item G, appoint Mr. Michael Parker to serve as the Ward Three Post Two Member of the Douglasville Planning Commission for a term expiring June first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Jackson, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, comments, questions? You, you've, you've heard my request. Is there any reason that we would not place those on the consent agenda? What about Coach Watts?
I, I don't have anything. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
And, and Dr. LaShawn Burdanly is not with us, correct? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We appreciate that. So we will ask that those four items, D, E, F, and G be placed on the consent agenda. Item H, appoint an individual to serve as the Ward Four Member of the Douglasville Planning Commission for a term expiring June first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. You have interviewed three individuals for this position. Those three individuals is Ms. Emily Dixon, Mr. Martin Raxton, and Mr. Francisco Artley. You interviewed these individuals about two weeks ago. They all meet the requirements and they all live in Ward Four. On Monday night, you will have a ballot to vote on these individuals.
Okay. Thank you, Val. Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments? Anyone? Okay. Looks like we have three individuals for that particular ward. And as Ms. Jackson has already stated, they do live in the ward. They are all qualified. They have provided their resumes. Coach Watts, do you have any comment on that?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, seeing nothing else then, no.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Estes.
Um, just a point of clarification. Um, I know that Ward Five only has one applicant. Has that already been voted on or do we need to add that to this?
Ms. Jackson?
No, sir. Mr. Keith Burnett, he's currently serving in that position currently. So legally advised me that council does not need to reappoint him into that current position.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
There was no other, there was no other person that requested to be interviewed.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we, something wasn't falling through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have tonight under planning and development.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to item number eleven, which is Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item twelve is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item this evening
Mm-hmm.
to adopt a resolution declaring the week of October fourth through the tenth, two thousand twenty, to be Georgia Cities Week in the City of Douglasville. And we have Ms. Chelsea Jackson here to explain.
Thank you, Councilman Estes. Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. If you look at the attachment, the resolution for Georgia City Week highlights the city's participation this year. Georgia Cities Week was originally scheduled in April, but due to the pandemic, it was rescheduled for October fourth through October tenth. On Tuesday, October sixth, city staff will deliver bags of city swag to third graders of Burnett Arbor Station and Eastside Elementary since they missed the second graders' visit in April. And for our younger residents, there will be an activity book placed on our website and social media for them to enjoy and learn about how government works. On October eighth, there will be trivia night for the entire family on Facebook Live. Prizes will be given to the top three winners. To participate to, on the, for the trivia night, just log onto Facebook and visit our Facebook page, which is City of Douglasville Government, and click you are interested in going or will be going to the event for further information. So that's one new event that we decided to incorporate with the pandemic, living in a virtual world. We decided to embrace that and have a Douglasville Trivia Night called Douglasville Live.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Councilman Estes.
Seeing none.
Oh, no, I had a question or a comment. I had a comment.
Sure.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, um, give kudos to you and the staff and, um, communications for coming up with something for the young people to do. I know every year they look forward to coming to the city and we, um, of course, can't help that we're in a pandemic. Um, but I appreciate you all, um, being creative and coming up with something so that they can participate and the families. So thank you, uh, to Jason and staff and yourself and the city manager for, um, having an opportunity for them to still have some type of, uh, connectivity with the city. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I would like to ask that this be put on the consent agenda for Monday's meeting.
Thank you.
That's all we have tonight. Madam Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Chairman Estes. We'll move on to Public Safety Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, item A, hold a public hearing to consider requests for the alcoholic beverage licensing for the on-premises sale and consumption of wine, malt beverage at the following establishment licensing. Lettuce Eat LLC, D V A, Divide Cafe and Market, location one-two-three-seven-five Bedderham Memorial Highway. Proposed agent outlet manager Karen Howard, the required fees has been paid in the finance department. Ms. Howard, please come down. State your name, please, ma'am, and address.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who do not know me, Karen Howard, and I am owner of the Vine Cafe and Market. Lettuce Eat is my LLC.
And Ms. Howard, uh, thank you for, uh, your application. Would this be your first application? Have you, have you, uh, worked with alcohol before?
I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to hear you.
Have you, uh, this your first, uh, application for alcohol? Have you ever served alcohol anywhere else before?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, uh, the question is going to be, how are you going to, uh, how are you going to educate your staff on serving?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, as a matter of fact, right now, we have a class that, if everything goes well, they're all signed up, ready. Um, any of the employees that are twenty-one and over will be, um, taking this class. But in addition to that, um, the full understanding of no one has served wine or beer over the age, under the age of twenty-one. And everyone is well aware of that. Um, also knowing that any, um, alcoholic beverages are to remain, um, in our cooling area for, uh, consumption for, um, customers when, after it's purchased, it's brought out. Uh, we also have a storage area that is up high above it. We would be able to keep the wine bottles and everything. But, um, but to educate them on, um, serving, um, to be able to serve glasses of wine, um, and also, um, the beer as well. But, um, but the class that they will be taking, it really has to do with, um, just etiquette, you know, on how to serve, what to do, when to do, that sort of thing, and not just kind of, you know, just out there. Um, just like we do with the food, you know, knowing exactly what to do. Hopefully that answers the question.
And, uh, checking I D?
And, um, you're going to have to, um, help me with it because I can't see his lips. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Check I D. And that's why when I indicated that anyone, um, under the age of twenty-one would not be served. You have to be at least twenty-one years of age in order to, um, get wine or beer from our establishment.
Hey, Mayor and Council, before we do a public hearing?
Yes, sir. I had a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Howard, it's good to see you again. Um, I just had some wings last week, but anyway. Um, so do you, have you had any experience in serving alcohol before?
Uh, for catering, um, with other people, catering and serving, um, alcohol. Hopefully, um, we will have someone who will be a sommelier, uh, of that, um, uh, if we get there to that point. That would be really, really good. But, um, yes, I have.
All right. Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other council members? Okay, Ms. Howard, at this time, we have to hold a public hearing. And, uh, is, at this time, we will open up the floor for, uh, those who speak against this applicant. You have five minutes.
Okay.
Since we have no takers, we open up the floor for this, for five minutes for, for whoever want to speak for this, for this item. Since we have no takers, we're closed the public hearing. And if there are no other questions, you come back on Monday, we'll give you answers, okay? Thank you. Moving on to item B, authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the U S Department of Justice and accept the two thousand twenty Burns Grant. Chief Fox?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is a, a burn grant that we usually get from the Department of Justice. Uh, uh, this grant, we'll, we will be utilizing the funds to purchase, uh, some gas masks, uh, for our officers. Uh, so it's, I think it's like two hundred, uh, four hundred fifty-two dollars, uh, a match. And we have that funds covered in our budget. So we're trying to get thirty-four, thirty-four masks. The grant is for seventeen thousand twenty-four dollars. But to get the thirty-four masks, the total cost is seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. So it leaves a match of four hundred fifty-two dollars. So as I was saying, we have that money covered in the, uh, in our budget.
Okay. Any question from the, uh, mayor? Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, um, how you've been protecting the community. We appreciate you and the police department, Douglasville Police Department. Um, I did have a question about, uh, you said the item was budgeted for this department. I did have a question about, you said the item was budgeted for this Department of Justice. So we signed, signed the agreement, and it has twenty-five thousand dollars on the application, but then it's seventeen thousand for something. You were telling me the breakdown. Do we have to pay anything? Is it out of confiscated drug funds, or is it from the general fund? Or you're, where is all that?
Four hundred and fifty-two dollars will be coming out of general funds out of our budget, which we would find in our general funds, the four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Okay.
Seven, seventeen thousand twenty-four dollars coming from the grant.
Yes, sir.
But we only owe four hundred and fifty-two dollars in order for us to get thirty-four masks.
Yes, sir.
We're trying to cover the entire department at some point to get all the officers up to speed with gas masks. We may have to take some money out of drug funds, but right now, we going through this grant.
The grant.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and this is riot gear for if we have, if we have a bad protest or something that happens, we just have to be prepared with?
Any extreme situation where gas would, or any other chemical, it could be, excuse me, it could be a train wreck.
Okay.
It don't have to be a bad situation, that demonstration, but, you know, trains come through here, and we never know what those trains are carrying. So our guys, we'll just be able to take care of ourselves while we out there in, in these situations.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Chief. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If there are no other questions, Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Chief. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item tonight, "着じたの mayor to sign a commercial lease agreement with the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority for the city's lease of six, excuse me, of the lease of sixty-seven oh one, Church Street." Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Jennifer Johnson, sixty-seven hundred, Church Street. As you know, the old Conference Center and the old Hair Barn are leased to the city by the Convention and Conference Center Authority. In front of you is the lease agreement for the old Conference Center. It's a one-year lease, good through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, with a rental of three thousand dollars a month to the authority, and since it is such a large amount, the three thousand dollars for a year, it does have to go in front of you for approval. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have any questions from mayor or council?
I do, Mr. Chairman. The only comment I would ask, Ms. Johnson, is that this is where communities development is currently.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. Yes. Yep, and the wellness clinic is in the old Hair Barn.
And the wellness is the Hair Barn?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I just wanted the public to know that. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments from council? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I'd like to ask that this be placed on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you. That's all I had tonight under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on then to Technology Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Protem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Protem. If you don't mind, if you would please take Transportation Committee as the vice chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Transportation Committee at this time as well.
Thank you so much, sir. Is there any other business to come before council this evening from council members? The only thing I would say is that, oh, yes, sir. Councilman Watts?
I'm sorry. I, I didn't get an opportunity to say this a minute ago when Councilman Davis presented that item, but I just would like to say that how proud I am to live in a city that's still providing, trying to provide our police officers with what they need to do to do their job. I appreciate Mr. Chairman's leadership on that committee and, and Chief Sparks' leadership at the police department. Thank you. That's all I had.
That was worth waiting for. It was great to hear. Thank you so much, Coach Watts. The only thing I would add is that next week is Fall Cleanup Week. Is that correct, City Manager? I'm pretty sure that I, it, it is. So for the citizens, for maintenance and sanitation, the sanitation department, you can put all those things out at the curb that you need to, and if you have paint and all of that stuff, you need to put some cat litter or something, Mr. Roberts always tells us every year, and there's a certain size for limbs and all of that, but it's one of those opportunities for us to clean up in our community. So if you're, it's going to be picked up on your regular trash day, so if they're taking a long time to come to your home, it's because they have a lot of materials outside. So cleanup is next, next week, and that's all I had. So we're going to updates from the city staff. Our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Chief Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Susan Littlefield.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Our chief, Chief Sparks, you have anything?
Yes, we have the City of Douglasville surplus auction this Saturday from nine a.m. until everything is sold out of the parking lot.
Yes, sir. Nine a.m. until the end.
Till the end. So come on out. We have a lot of items out there. They need to get registered. You could register at the PD Police Department tomorrow or Saturday morning when you come out for the auction.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief. Now, can you register online, or you have to come physically to the municipal facility?
Uh, I think you gotta come to the, you know.
Okay.
I haven't seen anything. We hadn't put anything online which you could register. I think we have the paperwork at the PD.
But you can register the day of, on Saturday, this Saturday? Okay, you have a great auctioneer, too. He does a wonderful job. Thank you so much, Chief. Our city manager, Ms. Marcia Hampton?
Only thing I would add, Mayor, is that we are going to commence back again, providing our departmental reports. So Mr. Roberts will be here on Monday night to talk about public services, so that would include Fall Cleanup Week, streets, even discussing sanitation rates and recycling. So that'll be under staff reports on Monday night.
Very good. Thank you so much, City Manager. So we do not have any staff reports. There's comments from citizens and delegates. If we have anyone who has sustained the meeting, it doesn't look like it, but if you are on the line, or if you want to come forward, you have five minutes to address the council and myself. I don't see anyone. Not having any other business, then this meeting is adjourned.
Goodbye.